I think that's all I had. I think that's the way it is. Go on. I think, I think, hold on, I might have another one.
Council members, please take your seats. If you'd like to start. Call of order. Common Council meeting, Monday, February 3rd, 2020. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
President.
Ballerin. Conti. Doche. Fahey. Farrell. Flynn. Frederick. Howie.
Here.
Igo. Robinson. Johnson. Kimbrough.
Here.
Love.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Thirteen present, two absent.
Thank you. Can you please rise with me and pledge allegiance? And after that, we'll have a moment of silence.
The pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've now reached portion in our agenda, public comment period. In this public comment period, you will have five minutes to talk about any subject you choose to at that time. When you come in front at the table, can you please state your name and address for the record? You will have five minutes. Please address your comments to me, Mr. President, or Chair. No council members at that time can respond to your public comment. If they choose to do so, they will comment later on a portion of the agenda. And with that being said, can the clerk please call the first speaker?
Darrell McGrath.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Darrell McGrath, and I own and live at number six Irving Street. And I'm here tonight to just raise a concern about something because of an incident on my street, which occurred last week and actually has been an on-running problem. I was awakened one morning last week, actually at 4:30 in the morning, by the sound of an incredible disturbance. I actually first thought somebody was trying to break into my house. I could literally feel the vibrations of somebody trying to batter down the door on an apartment in a house across the street from me. Somebody beat me to calling the police. So at 4:45 in the morning, I have two Albany officers in my house trying to get some information on what I heard and listening to what I could tell them about this incident. And by the way, apparently, they had been there many times for this. Apparently, a young man who was placed in an apartment in this house, number five Irving Street, was placed there under a housing program from St. Peter's Health Services. I am told this by the owner of the house, who does not live in the house, but does own it. And he said to me when I contacted him the next morning, "Well, it's not my problem anymore. He was noncompliant with the program, so feel free to call the police anytime you need to." And I, of course, wrote back to him, "Actually, you should feel free to take care of this because it's your building." He doesn't care. Why would he? He doesn't live there. So I contacted St. Peter's Hospital the next morning, and I got quite a runaround. I have copies of notes to submit to the record if I may. And a week later, I have yet to hear from anyone at St. Peter's. And as I said to one of the officials that I was directed to contact, "If I had gotten the first letter that I sent you, I certainly would have responded." So this morning, I found myself talking to a person in the Public Information Department at St. Peter's. And frankly, he didn't sound that concerned either. So my question, which I realize at this point is rhetorical, I don't think I'm going to get an answer tonight, is, what recourse do the residents in Albany neighborhoods have? And what, if any, tracking of these kinds of programs is done through the city? Do the programs or agencies have to register that they are operating placements of severely mentally ill people in a neighborhood? I'd like to also add, in no way am I objecting to the fact that somebody has a community placement. I live in a neighborhood in Albany where this has been done many times. And in fact, I actually split with some of my neighbors over my upset at how they responded to the plan by CARES Incorporated to put in those buildings on Elm Street. I work for a union that has a strong social justice ethic, and I believe I try to live those values. So in no way am I saying, "Uh-uh, I don't want this in my backyard." What I am saying is, and what I said to St. Peter's Hospital, "This young man appears to be wandering the streets at night. I am told he was evicted from their program and noncompliant. Who's looking out for him?" And it's not out of the realm of possibility to feel concerned that as he has come back numerous times, some night, he might come back with the intention of doing harm to the person who's still living in that apartment or to somebody who intercedes.
You have one minute left.
Thank you. I think I've more than gotten my point across, and I do believe Ms. Fahey is going to follow up with me. I've spoken with her. But I just needed to vent about this because I couldn't believe St. Peter's was so dismissive. And as some of you know, I'm also a reporter, so they're going to be sorry they tangled with me. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd like to submit those for the record, you can.
I would like to.
Thank you.
Hakeem Thompson. Alana Klein.
Alana Klein, 29 Glenwood, 12208, now 12203. I'd like to state, I don't know the details of the previous speaker's situation, but I do want to state for the record that there are certain situations that hospitals cannot give details of patient, personal details out due to HIPAA violation or due to HIPAA standards. So I'm not saying that's the case here, but I just hope that that's the case, that they weren't dismissive of this person's claims. So just all that to say, that's not why I came here tonight. One of the reasons that I started speaking before the common council, the reason I made a promise to myself when I started doing this. When I came out as transgender, I became familiar with the story of Lila Alcorn. I have spoken about her numerous times. And there's probably only one of you sitting in front of me, only because you're new to your seat. She's a transgender teenager from Ohio who unfortunately took her own life. And her story just happens to coincide with my coming out. She was psychologically abused by her parents, cellphone taken away. And her suicide note went viral. And before I get too much into it, I don't have time to read her suicide note. I have done that in the past. Madam City Clerk, I have that for the record. And Mr. President, I would like to submit that, which I would do after my comments. I made a promise to myself that I would read the suicide note in front of the council on the meeting closest to the anniversary of her death, which was December 28th, 2014, which this year or this past year would have been December 16th, 2019. That was the meeting closest to the anniversary. I have addressed this council about my struggles with alcoholism. On February 12th, 2019, I was diagnosed with leukemia. Somehow remarkably, despite my drinking, in April, I don't know the exact date, I achieved remission. As messed up as this sounds, my drinking got worse. I don't know if I was trying to fill a void of not going to treatment two, three times a week, but I started missing work. Prior to that, the only meeting I had missed in two and a half years was because I was in the hospital, because they basically, not literally, but figuratively, dragged me kicking and screaming into the hospital. I think I even submitted written comments for that meeting. I literally wrote a letter to Mayor Kathy Sheehan from the hospital. They got the transgender flag posted out in front of this building on Transgender Day of Visibility, March 31st. I wrote a letter from my hospital bed to the mayor. That's how committed I was. I started missing meetings, one off here, there, because I was drunk, hungover, too drunk or hungover to show up for meetings, thinking it was no big deal. Yeah, my comments weren't that important that day.
You have one minute remaining?
Thank you. On December 16th, 2019, well, let me backtrack. I had been in detox in August, in November. I was in detox, went months sober. On December 13th, 2019, after a month sober, I relapsed again, went 10 days sober, or went on a 10-day binge. And in the middle of that 10-day binge, on December 16th, 2019, I broke that promise that I made to Lila. There's a song by Five For Fighting that begins, "I'm not meant to fly, I'm not that naive, I'm just out to find the better part of me." No war with Iran, police survivors, boycott the NRI, back lies the matter. Alhamdulillah.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Marlon Anderson.
Good evening, members of the council, members of the public. My name, of course, is Marlon Anderson, a community advocate residing at 214 Lark Street Apartment 2A in the city of Albany. I've come forward this evening to speak a little bit of what I got diverted from at the last meeting and to incorporate it into a basic overall question, a statement about what's going on in the city at this time. Because the city, what's going on in the city echoes what's going on in the nation. And that is the question of leadership. Where is the, who is answering the call to leadership when it is needed in this city? As it is needed in this nation. There are hard decisions that must be made in this city currently on issues of concern. Not to be the person who said, "I told you so," but I sat right here in this seat on many, many occasions in the last few months, warning you about what was to come to pass, what has come to pass up on Capitol Hill with the state deficit. And with millions of dollars now currently at risk and in escrow now, we have to wonder questions about where we are, our city gonna go, now that the state is in financial duress. We got programs that are totally reliant on state funding, snug program, totally relying on state funding. We got city programs for kids, totally relied on state funding. But yet, we don't know now if we're gonna get that state funding. We're in limbo right now. So that bears the question, where is the leadership on this issue? And where has the leadership been? I mean, how have we come to this pass? How did we wait until we got into the hole to realize that we are in the hole? We got a decision that has to be made. The Albany Police Department has come to the conclusion that we have to separate five police officers from employment in our city. And while it's something that, in my view, has to be done to set a powerful statement about brutality and racism in our city, again, it bears the question, where is the leadership? And about making the hard choices, going back to making the hard choices, there has to be a hard choice in leadership about that decision because it's only a recommendation. And leadership has to decide if they're gonna act on that recommendation, if they are in fact gonna go for it and do what needs to be done. But that is the question that must be answered in this city. Because there are too many things going on. Again, we are still under duress. Bullets are flying every day and every night in this city. We are still in a shooting gallery. We hear people talk about homeless individuals and demented individuals getting into issues on the streets. Our streets are flooded. We're homeless and mentally ill people, and I mean flooded. And it's something that I've been speaking on and pushing on for the last few months now. But again, it goes back to saying, where is the leadership on these issues? And to be quite frank, it's invisible. It is invisible in this city that there are leaderships that are taking a hard stand on these issues, the hard stand that needs to be had. Because people are looking to this building for that leadership, and they're not finding it. And that is why the problems that are in this city.
You have one minute remaining?
Thanks, sir. That are in this city, that are flourishing, continue to flourish. So when it boils down to what's going on, in the next few months, these issues demand to see a hard picture and stance of leadership from this building. Because if the leadership is not there, then we will continue to have the chaos, and that's no more than what it is in this city, that's a foot in the city. And with the state of the city that it's in, the financial state of it's in, the social state that it's in, the criminal state that it's in, we can't afford to have a void of leadership in this city. So I am crying out as the voice of the people, as I have known to become, for leadership. Show the leadership that this city needs. And if you do, I am here to back you up. Thank you very much.
Time's up. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Susan Dubois.
Hello, my name is Susan Dubois. I live at 24 Jeanette Street in the city of Albany, and I'm the treasurer of the Delaware Area Neighborhood Association. I'm speaking this evening in support of the resolution about snow removal and also to provide some background information on that. Back in the beginning of December, as you all know, we had a huge snowfall. And that occasioned some discussion among people in the Delaware Avenue area. And I'd like to read a letter that the Delaware Area Neighborhood Association sent to Mayor Sheehan and to Karen Bazil, the CEO of the Capital District Transportation Authority. The letter says, "At a recent meeting of the Delaware Area Neighborhood Association's Board of Directors, there was discussion of snow removal at bus stops and crosswalks in the city of Albany. The discussion was occasioned by the major storm, et cetera, and said that the concerns pertain to smaller storms as well. It was unclear to the participants in the discussion exactly who has the responsibility for clearing snow that blocks access to bus stops, whether this might be the city of Albany Department of General Services or the Capital District Transportation Authority." Following the early December snowstorm, there were huge mounds of snow between the sidewalk and the pavement at many bus stops, requiring bus passengers to climb over the mountain to get into the bus. This was partly snow that had been piled up by snowplows and as a result was densely packed. If you could clarify whose responsibility it is to remove snow that blocks the street from the sidewalk at the bus stops, that would be helpful. In addition, please let us know who to contact if access to the bus is blocked by snow at a particular location. An additional question for the city has to do with removal of snow from street corners where the sidewalks go onto the crosswalks. As with the bus stops, much of the snow piled up at the crosswalks come from plowing. And I sent this, I was the one who signed the letter. I sent this letter on January 5th, and I have not yet gotten a response either from the mayor's office or from CDTA. I checked the Dana Post Office box today, and there still hasn't been anything there. But the letter was copied to Kathy Fahey, who is a council member for part of the neighborhood, and to Sonia Fredericks, who's a council member for another part of the neighborhood. And I've been speaking with Kathy, and I'd like to express appreciation to Kathy for introducing the resolution. I think part of it's gonna need to be worked out by the CDTA and the city. But Kathy and I have also exchanged some emails and talked a bit about how this problem's dealt with in other cities. It is something that, as the resolution says, affects equity. It's an equity issue, and it also relates to the efforts that cities have been doing in recent years on complete streets to make the area friendlier for pedestrians, particularly friendlier for people who have any type of disability, which is really made worse by the snow situation. And I think that's about it. And again, thanks for considering the resolution.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Vincent Regusa.
Good evening. My name is Vincent Regusa. I live at 13 Beach Avenue, Albany, New York. And I am also for the resolution being introduced, 60 dot 21 dot 20 R. And that's the resolution to promote equity in pedestrian safety and mobility by improving snow and ice removal from city sidewalks, streets, crossings, and bus stops. Even the 15th Ward had a difficult time in the snowstorm that we had up around the bus stop and that. It was very difficult to get the students into Eagle Point School. And even a couple of days after that, the sidewalks weren't clean. And numerous complaints went out to C Click Fix It to get the sidewalks shoveled. So I definitely would like to see that resolution go through. The other thing is that I'm here, and February 12th, Wednesday, in front of the Planning, Economic Development, and Land Use Committee, is Local Law Be 2020. And as I started to read this, one of the things that reached out to me was the last two lines of the cover page, which says, "A resolution adopting community choice aggregation program, education, and outreach plan, and a customer op-out letter." Op-out, op-letter. So after reading through this resolution, I found out that everyone in the city of Albany, I believe, is gonna get a letter, and it's gonna give you 30 days to op-out. Nothing says to op-in because in 30 days, anyone who has National Grid as their utility provider will automatically be opt-in, opt-in. But the letter, you would get a choice to op-out. So I said, "Well, how can that be? How can they take National Grid customers and automatically put them in this community choice utility company?" I don't understand how that could be. I says, "Nobody should be able to tell me that we're gonna take you because you're a National Grid customer and put you in a community choice." So that was one of the things that bothered me, since, keep in mind, that we are a sanctuary city, and many residents don't even understand the English language. You can take my street alone. There's five families, two from Albania, a couple Italians, and a family from Russia that does not speak English fluently. And I doubt very much if they would understand, when they got their bill, that National Grid is no longer their provider, that they went with another company. I don't know. So what I did was, I took it upon myself to call the Public Service Commission. I says, "Would you explain this to me? And didn't I get one of the persons or one of the people that was involved in the Public Service Commission putting this program together?" And he said to me, he says, "Well, geez, that doesn't sound right because our program says education, and that you would be getting a letter, and in the letter, you could either op-in or op-out." I said, "Well, that sounds all right. But what happens if I get a letter and I look at it and I say, 'I don't understand,'" and rip it up and throw it away? What happens to me? Well, you couldn't answer that. So if you maybe don't understand the English language... So if you maybe don't understand the English language, don't read the English language, and you get a letter that says you got thirty days to op in, what am I opping into? So the other thing, as I continue to read through this, I started to find more questions. Well, one of the questions is, the program is for homeowners, the small businesses, and any of National Grid customers. The nego- and who, who in the city is going to negotiate with the community choice? Who's gonna pick that utility for National Grid customers to automatically move, moved into? Anybody know? Nah, nobody knows. The other thing, can, can-
Have one minute remaining.
How frequently would you be renegotiating the contract? Now, it, so I looked, went a little farther, and I found a company by name, Ambit, A-M-B-I-T. And how they work is, they guarantee that they can beat National Grid's rate after a year. And if so, if they don't, if they, then you get a rebate. Well, will Community Choice be giving us a rebate? And how many people will we take to set up this program? I need somebody, basically, to look at all the utilities that are out there, the rates that they would be given, and this is an ongoing thing, because we have people moving and coming into the city. So that means, who's gonna tell the new people coming in, "You can't go with National Grid," because Community Choice has this one? It sounds, it sounds like a little bit of a socialist country here. So with that being said, and I will have, I have a, a list of questions here, uh, and, and I will be bringing them to the February twelfth meeting, but I, I bring this to your attention, because I feel that this whole council should be read the, read these over. And you're gonna probably tell me, "Well, I didn't, I really, truthfully don't understand it." And I say, "I don't blame you. This is like the USDO a- all over again. Nobody understood that program."
Your time is up, Mr. Regusa.
And now, and now you're gonna take a program, and you're gonna move me into it. Maybe I don't wanna be moved into the Community Choice thing, and if I don't op out, I'm automatically in it.
Thank you, Mr. Regusa.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Dr. Brenda Robinson.
Thank you for having me. My name is Dr. Brenda Robinson. I live at two-six-six Livingston Avenue here in Albany, and I am the Chair of the Commission on Human Rights. Um, I'd like to speak about the mandatory diversity training. And to, in twenty-twenty, for the City of Albany to not already have mandatory diversity training is very shameful. Diversity training, cultural diversity, EEO training, implicit bias, all those things are very imperative, especially in the workplace. Racism is systemic. The number one complaint I get is from city employees, specifically DGS, and it's based on race. The New York State Division of Human Rights, the number one complaint that they get is employment, and that is based on race as well. When we take a look at, uh, cultural diversity, implicit bias, I think we all should know the importance of that. Amongst the complaints, uh, that I get, I get several complaints, and like I said, the number one is the City of Albany, but, um, to hear a city employee come to me with a complaint stating that a city employee, a supervisor, is boasting about being a head nigger in charge, we have a problem here. There's work that needs to be done. So whether we're looking at education, training, disciplinary action, or whatever steps that we need to take, this needs to be addressed. These are not things that we can continue to turn a blind eye. We need to work together and really, um, address our situation here. Um, on another note, on November two thousand eighteen, I did a press conference with the mayor and Dr. Apleres. Um, it was in regards to the equity agenda. Dr. Apleres and the mayor mentioned about, um, roads as their example. I mentioned employ- employment. I would like to see the road sidewalks and snow removal, the data and demographics on that particular process, um, roads that have been repaired, roads that are in need of repair. And we, I really wanna look at that process and really activate the equity agenda and all the conversations that we had around it, so we can take a good look at that process and provide equity and move forward with that. We need to make a change. Also, I'd like to see, which I have requested many times, employment, um, demographics in regards to specifically race, gender, and disability. We would like to look at, um, far as promotions, upward mobility, people of color, um, how many people of color do we have in supervising these positions here in the City of Albany? These are the things that we need to look at in regards to the equity agenda. Don't let the equity agenda just be a piece of paper. This should be a living document. It should do exactly what we say that it should be doing, and we need to pay attention, and we all are accountable. When we take a look at racism, I mean, two- twenty twenty, and the City of Albany does not have mandatory diversity training already, that's shameful. Thank you.
Thank you. We've reached our thirty-minute time period. Um, we have, I think, one, one, two more speakers. Mr. Kimbrough?
Motion to extend public comment thirty minutes.
Here's a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Can the clerk introduce the next speaker?
Janet Carmuski, Carmuski.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to comment. I'm Janet Carmuski. I'm a resident of one-seventy-four J Street. Um, I am speaking in support of Resolution seven dot twenty-one dot twenty R, the resolution to declare a climate emergency. I would just like to read into the record that I am concerned by the influence of fossil fuel companies and all of those who fund them on our political and our economic systems and our overall social and cultural environment. I would like to commend Councilwoman, uh, Uso Anani for bringing forward this, who's out of the room, uh, for bringing forward this resolution. Uh, I particularly applaud the emphasis in the wording of this resolution on marginal, marginalized communities and all of those who are disproportionately affected by climate change now and in the future. I particularly applaud the direction of this bill in calling for a transition away from fossil fuel and towards renewable energy to a Green New Deal and to a just transition for all those who seek employment in the sectors that renewable energy will create. Uh, this is a, an emergency. Uh, we are all of us indeed affected by global heating and by the loss of biodiversity, by the severe weather we've already seen, let alone what is to come. Uh, since this is an emergency, I would like to call on the council to add, if possible, to the resolution, a provision to require that the planning committee report back within thirty days with a, or as soon as possible, with some, uh, specific plans. Uh, I would like to call on the City of Albany to establish a climate emergency mobilization department that will serve as a hub for organizing the social and economic mobilization with all efforts necessary and available to coordinate climate and resilience responses, including emergency climate mitigation, resilience, adaptation, engagement, education, advocacy, research, and development programs, uh, beginning with a robust climate emergency public education and stakeholder outreach program, including the mayor's Sustainability Advisory Council, biologists, ecologists, climate scientists, social and environmental justice advocates, labor unions, union federations, local non-government organizations, neighborhood councils, homeowners' associations, and business groups. Again, I am commending the, the common council for bringing forward this resolution. I am proud to be an Albany resident, and I'm committed to the continued pleasantness and vitality of the city in which I live. By all means, let us declare a resolution, but let us also take a historic opportunity to go where we must, and in fact, where all communities of resilience must go. Apply all effort to respond with the seriousness and detail that the scale and severity of the climate emergency requires. Thank you.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Catherine Carroll.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much. Uh, my name is Catherine Carroll. I reside at seven-eighty-four Washington Avenue. Um, I'm, I wanted to take a minute, um, I wanted to speak on two different topics, um, briefly. One is in support of, um, the, um, the mandatory diversity training. Um, I think that's incredibly necessary. However, I would like to ask the council to amend, um, the, the laws introduced to specifically include disability. I noted that it currently doesn't mention disability and diverse, uh, disability and diversity of disability are, um, along with the other, um, identity categories mentioned are incredibly important for city employees to have an opportunity to, uh, learn about and understand. Um, secondly, um, I also wanted to, um, put my support on the record for the resolution, um, regarding, um, looking at the snow and ice removal in the city. Um, I'm personally affected by inadequate snow and ice removal. Um, I'm a very happy pedestrian and, um, public transit user, um, and it becomes very difficult for me when, uh, bus stops and sidewalks are not cleared. Um, I also happen to have a disability. I have low vision, and so, um, even though I don't, uh, have a physical disability, it becomes very difficult for me to navigate, um, just public rights, uh, public rights of way, uh, to get where I'm going. I, I run a lot of errands, um, in my neighborhood. I just walk where I have to go, but, uh, the snow makes it incredibly difficult. Sometimes I have to walk in the street, which is very dangerous. Um, and, uh, beyond just my own person, uh, I live with my partner, uh, who's a wheelchair user, and I was very upset when, um, I really, I wanted to go to, I actually came to the tree lighting here in, in City Hall, um, and I asked my partner to come with me that evening after work, and he declined because, uh, between where we work, um, around, um, Washington and South Swan and here, uh, there were a number of curb cuts that just had snow piled in them, even though the sidewalks themselves were actually pretty clear by that point, the curb cuts were not clear. And so, uh, we just, we didn't have that opportunity to come here and enjoy the event together. So, um, I just wanted to share that, um, to emphasize the need to address, um, adequate snow and ice removal. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Hakeem Thompson.
Good evening. My name is Hakeem Thompson. I reside at two-forty-four Washington Avenue. Um, I here to address everybody regarding the trade restrictions at Albany, meaning that I've discovered at some point in time-
Can you please pull the microphone closer to you so we can hear you? Thanks.
I kinda already speak, so I'll cut it. I discovered a few months back that Albany does not allow, uh, mobile vending for everyone. And what I realized that is that, that's a trade restriction. And my thing is, during the process and during this time, I was reaching out to find out, why is it like that? You know what I mean? As a mobile vendor, I would be thinking, you should be able to, be able to operate anywhere through the city parameters, and not only that, is, is, is giving opportunity to change lives. So I'm here to change other people's lives as well as mine's, because I would like to build my own legacy. I don't wanna keep being a clock puncher, waking up, you know, going hard for somebody else. That ain't my dream. So I'm here to speak to change for everybody. It ain't just me. And nobody seems to give me these answers or could tell me why there are trade restrictions in Albany, but it's none in surrounding cities as far as Schenectady, Cohoes, Troy, uh, a- and it's just like, why Albany? Can anybody tell me?
Well, you must not have been here. Um, public comment period, we don't answer questions at this time.
Oh, sure.
You just tell, speak, and later on, if, uh, council members wanna address what's said in public comment period, they will, but at this time, it's just you speaking to us.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, and I've also realized there's a lot of other, this is a segregated city, whether people re- wanna, uh, address it or not, but, you know, that's the elephant of Rome. I just see a lot of de facto segregation. You know what I mean? Like, you go on the other side of the hospital, that's a whole different type of world. You know what I'm saying? It doesn't look like Albany. You know what I'm saying? And then you wonder why, when you're going up Central Ave, why is this or why is that? And like, I, I'm not a racist or any towards any other communities or group of people, but I, the questions are starting to be asked, like, well, how is it that these people from other countries know how to operate bodegas in things that don't even exist in their homelands? So like, who's giving them the education and the knowledge to move forward with these businesses? And the people of the land who probably have families that died in wars to help, I better could be what the country it is, is like, where's the opportunity for them? I mean, for this much of the matter, that's all I have to say, but that's my issue and my concern for the community as a whole. And that's it.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Alex Thompson.
Good evening. Uh, I appreciate, uh, you hearing my comments. Uh, I know it's late. I really support, uh, the effort-
Can you just state your name and address for the record?
Uh, my name's Alex Thompson. Um, seven-eighty-four Washington Avenue.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I appreciate the city, um, you know, trying to undertake this issue of clearing bus stops and curb cuts. It's a regular issue here in the Northeast and in New York. Um, I rent property here in the City of Albany, but I also own property outside the City of Albany, so I also know what it's like to have to, you know, pay to get someone to clear the snow. It's not easy, but, um, it makes a huge difference for someone like me, uh, to a lot of my friends, to fellow, uh, people with disabilities that ride the bus. Um, I can't offer you, you know, a perfect solution, but it, we really need to address this issue. Um, just, uh, you know, after the last snow, I had a meeting, uh, to give public comment on, uh, the home and community renewals planned for the state, uh, for my work. And, you know, I parked down on city, State Street, and the curb cut, someone had thrown some salt on it, hoping, I guess, that it would melt, and it did not, and it was full with slush, I'm sure, from plowing, and I had to go, uh, in the street, as was mentioned before. You know, when the curb cuts are not clear, you have to go in the street, in my scooter, uh, four lanes of traffic, and, uh, it's not a fun thing to do. Um, you know, you never know if someone's gonna be distracted on a cellphone or something, or just not paying attention, hit you or something, but, you know, that's the situation we find ourselves in. So, um, I really appreciate the effort, um, if we can do something about clearing the snow. It would make a big difference to me, and I'm sure a lot of the other people with disabilities that can't be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And that is our final speaker for tonight, uh, public comment period. So public comment period is closed. And now we're moving on to the items on our agenda. Mr. Kimbrough, do we have any approval from previous minutes for next approval?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Going to move to considerations of local laws. Local laws introduced. Mr. Conti.
Uh, thank you. Mr. President, I noticed the introduction of local law C of twenty-twenty.
Thank you, sir. Uh, can the clerk please read the local law?
A local law amending part fourteen of part six of chapter forty-two of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to employee diversity training.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough?
Refer to Law Committee.
Thank you. Moving on to local laws held, Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Local Law A of 2020 and request passage and a roll call vote thereon.
Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please read the local law?
A local law amending Article 24 of Part 14 of Chapter 42 of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to reporting requirement of the chief city auditor.
Is there any discussion on the local law? Seeing none, can the clerk please call a roll?
Anani. Conti. Dochet. Fahy. Farrell. Flynn. Frederick. Howie.
Yes.
Igo. Johnson. Kimbrough.
Yes.
Love. O'Brien.
Yes.
Thirteen in the affirmative.
Thank you. Local law passes. Moving on to item on the agenda, any reports from standing committees? Ms. Fahy? Do you want to give a report?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Planning and Economic Development Committee met this evening on Resolution 2122R and passed it out of committee with a positive recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fahy. Any other reports, any standing committees? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance introduced. Mr. Conti.
I think that's my planning.
Oh, he said you. Sorry, sir. Ms. Fahy for planning.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Ordinance 12120 and ask for its introduction.
Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance repealing Chapter 303 of the Code of the City of Albany.
Thank you. And that will be going to planning. Moving on to ordinances held. Mr. Kimbrough.
Rest of the ordinances are on the agenda, held.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough. Moving on to resolutions, moving on to resolutions introduced. Ms. Fahy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 62120R and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution to promote equity in pedestrian safety and mobility by improving snow and ice removal from city sidewalks, street crossings, and bus stops.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Refer to General Services.
Thank you. Continuing on with resolutions introduced, Mr. Anani.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 72120R and ask for its introduction.
Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution declaring a climate emergency and calling for an immediate emergency mobilization to restore a safe climate.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Refer to Planning.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to Resolu-, Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 8.21.20R and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to the creation of a full-time position, which will affect a salary total for the 2020 budget.
Mr. Kimbrough?
It's referred to Finance.
Thank you. Ms. Fahy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 92120R and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution adopting Community Choice Aggregation Program Education and Outreach Plan and Customer Opt-Out Letter.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Refer to Planning.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 10.21.20R and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to the creation of a full-time position, which will affect a salary total for the 2020 budget.
Thank you. And Mr. Kimbrough?
Refer to Finance.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, Mr. Anani. I mean, sorry, Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to add by majority consent Resolution 132120 to 122120 and 112120.
All those in favor? Mr. Conti would like to be heard on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll, I'll support the motion, but I, as I mentioned in caucus earlier tonight, we really need to get back to our rules in terms of what majority consent means. We have deadlines in our rules as to when legislation is supposed to be submitted and when that agenda becomes available to members and to the public, so the public knows what is on there. Majority consent by adding legislation after the agenda's been published. Public is not always aware of what is on there, what's being considered. And under the rules, I mean, there is a provision for majority consent related to, and the rules say, emergency legislation or legislation not listed on the printed agenda, when it's, when it comes out, accompanied by a message of necessity, may be considered at any regular meeting with the consent of majority of the council members present. In practice, what that message of necessity meant has been legislation that did not meet the deadline, but can be added because it cannot wait for the next regularly scheduled meeting because of the import or, or other issues. In the cases here, we don't have that. And so I think moving forward, as I said, we really need to get back to that practice. Of the three items here that we're adding, arguably, one probably can qualify for that, the one related to Black History Month, because that relates to a current celebration that's currently happening. But I, I think, you know, and I said, I'll, I'll support the, the motion tonight, but moving forward, I really think we need to be more cognizant of what our rules require and the impact of adding legislation out of convenience in a lot of cases, as opposed to really sticking with our deadlines. And sometimes we've done this in the past. There have been cases where there have not been reasons given, cases where we have had reasons. But I think sometimes, especially when you're dealing with substantial legislation, that it's important to really abide by those requirements. So I think moving forward, hopefully, we'll be more cognizant of that requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 1321R and ask for its passage on a roll call vote.
No, you're introducing it.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 112120R and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Recognizing the Albany Common Council Legislative Black and Hispanic Caucus.
Thank you. Ms. Fahy, I mean, Ms. Farrell? Oh, this is yours?
No, that, that last piece of legislation is going to count to operations.
Thank you. Ms. Fahy?
President, I notice.
Oh, is this, is yours, is this yours? Yes, it's 12, sorry.
Mr. President, I notice Ordinance Number 122120. Resolution, sorry, and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to an adjustment in salary for certain positions in the Law Department for the 2020 budget.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Refer to Finance.
Thank you. Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 132120R and ask for its passage on a roll call vote.
Mr., I mean, can the clerk please read the resolu-
A resolution to honor Black History Month and the contributions of African-Americans in directing the mayor to raise the Pan-African flag on City Hall annually in solidarity.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing, Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, Black History Month began in 1826 by Dr. Carter G. Wilson and many other prominent African-Americans. Black History Month is a time to honor the contributions and sacrifices made by many African-Americans. Many who moved this country forward, a country that we all enjoy today. African-Americans have lived and died to receive the recognition that they deserve. As a story, I think it's important to keep Black History at the forefront of our national conversations, especially looking at some of the rhetoric that you gave from our White House. You know, Dr. G. Carter Wilson stated, and he was representing African-Americans, he said, "You have a wonderful history, you know. If you're unable to demonstrate to the world that you have a history, the world will say to you, you're not going to enjoy the blessings of democracy or anything else." Now, those words mean so true, especially if you look at all of our history. We've had scientists. We've had artists, educators, business people, influential figures, members of the faith community, advocates, liberal protesters. And many of those, some see the recognition that they deserve, but some don't. And I just, I think this resolution is important to set a clear message that the city of Albany recognizes African-American history. And that, you know, many people that said earlier, well, you know, we provide a flag, the Pan-African flag, about giving the service. And when they give the service, what we say, at the fifth grand, just one sentence that talks about the plan. Everything else is about recognizing and honoring the contributions and the many sacrifices that African-Americans have made across this country, across the state, and also the city of Albany. I mean, it's no secret, there are several African-Americans who have made progress that have not been recognized by the city of Albany. And I haven't seen their names, but I will tell you this, those days are over. We will recognize African-Americans whenever we get the opportunity to. And I see some like Thomas, who took advantage of the street names. Sometimes when you look at some of the street names, it's a nursery song contest, though. Some of those people made significant contributions to the city of Albany. And as his body gets more diverse, and his city gets more diverse, you're going to hear more names coming out of some of the accomplishments of African-Americans. And all African-Americans who have made progress, a living history. I want you to know this, we love you, we care about you, we believe in you, we believe in the progress that you're making. And they'll make who we recognize throughout history.
Thank you. Mr. Howie?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just looking at the further resolved, and I'm, just the wording has me a little bit confused. It says that the mayor of the city of Albany raised the Pan-African flag on City Hall. I don't see the mayor going out and actually, is it, she has the flag raised or?
This is a discussion we should have had in caucus, questions you should have had for the sponsors of the resolution.
Okay.
I don't think at this point in time, we need to discuss that right now. This is about the resolution, not about what the mayor is going to do and how that's going to happen. That should have taken place in caucus.
Well, respectfully, Mr. President, this is the wording, we're going to put in.
Say that again?
We're putting in, we're going to vote on it tonight, right?
Yes, sir.
So if the wording is wrong or in, in, we, we can't fix that with a friendly amendment?
Amended for what purpose? It just? We're not going to have, we're we're not going to have a discussion, that should have taken place in caucus, those questions should have been answered in caucus. The chair is going to recognize Mr. Johnson to speak on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree it's important that all members of our community should see their flags flying outside of City Hall. I think that when they have to ride through and they see other flags and they don't see their flags, it definitely can have effect on self-esteem. And, you know, I'm excited about February being Black History Month. But, you know, I think that if you're going to champion a cause, you know, we should look at the work, your total body of work. And it's just funny to hear some of the statements that I hear, when, if you go back and you look at how people vote when they have a chance to support some of the issues that are near and dear to the inner city and, you know, to the African-American community, there's no support for that. And, you know, to stand up here and, and make these long speeches and you don't follow it out with your actions, because it's a lot of things going on.
Mr. Johnson?
It's a lot of things going on.
I, 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 I would like you to focus on the resolution. You can do, you can, your comments like that, you can do in miscellaneous. Please focus your comments in the resolution.
My, my, my conversation is about the resolution that's passed forward and my.
Because in miscellaneous, you can do that piece. That's all I'm saying.
What I'm trying to establish is my problems I have with the legislation. So, you know, that's what I'm getting into, and it's difficult for me not to support a, 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 a piece of legislation that is supporting something that is very important to my community. But, you know, I, I just think that the way this went, the way this went down, I'm very uncomfortable with it. So I wanted to be on record that I'm uncomfortable with, with it, about it, and I do support what Richard is saying in terms of how the processes aren't always followed. So, you know, I will be supporting it, but it's reluctantly because of how we got, we came to this moment. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Further discussion on the resolution? Are you going to talk about the resolution? If you're going to respond to Mr. Johnson, I will cut you off. You can do that in miscellaneous. Mr. Anani?
I just want to thank my colleagues for supporting this resolution. I also want to recognize my colleague who wasn't able to be here with us, Councilmember Robinson, who actually was the author of this resolution. So again, I just want to have that on record that this was orchestrated by Councilmember Robinson. There are people who talk and there's people who put pen on paper. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anani. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Dochet?
Yes.
Fahy? Farrell?
Yes, co-sponsor Fahy.
Flynn? Frederick? Howie?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Igo? Johnson? Kimbrough?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Love?
Yes, co-sponsor.
O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Thirteen in the affir- Yes, ma'am. Thirteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Moving on to resolutions. Held, Ms. Fahy, I have to correct, miss, on this one.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 2122R and ask for its, a roll call vote and passage.
Thank you, Ms. Fahy. Can the clerk please read the resolution? Thank you, Ms. Fahy. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council confirming the appointment of Jordine Jones as a member of the Albany Parking Authority.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani? Conti? Dosette? Fahy? Farrell? Flynn? Frederick? Hoey?
Yes.
Igo? Johnson? Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love? O'Brien?
Yes.
Thirteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Moving on, we have a Commissioner of Deeds, Ms. Farrell?
Mr. President, I, um, resolve that the following persons be hereby appointed to the, as Commissioner of Deeds and waive the reading of the law.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, any miscellaneous? Mr. O'Brien?
Um, I'm hereby giving notice that at the next meeting of the, uh, common council, I will make a motion to discharge from committee ordinance number forty-four one twelve nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Ms. Fahy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, uh, Mr., I just wanted to bring attention to Mr. Raguso's comments uh, about, uh, his concerns about the community choice aggregation and the opt-out letter. He had a lot of very important questions, um, and we are going to, uh, see if we can get those questions answered for him. And he's also the president of a neighborhood association at Eagle Point. But I, I, I guess I, I just wanna take the time to, um, reach out to my fellow council members, and if you are representing a neighborhood association that would like to have someone come and speak on this issue, uh, this, this was very helpful. Mr. Raguso shows how, how many questions there's gonna be, uh, by the public on this issue. Um, so if, I would be very happy to help set that up, if you wanna let me know what neighborhood association is and who to contact. I'd be happy to set that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fahy. The other business? Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, uh, it's an announcement from, uh, our research council. Uh, if you got any legislation that you want on the, the second, uh, February meetings, uh, agenda, it's due by the close of business tomorrow. Okay?
Wednesday?
But, yeah, it, it, it's probably, uh, more wishful thinking than anything. Wednesday is the day. He, he would like it by close of business tomorrow.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor?